It's six o'clock. I call the order of the City of Kennedy's City Council Special Council Meeting. A core Miss President, Amanda, will you please call her?
Counselor Brandon?
Present.
Counselor Science?
Here.
Counselor Connor? Here.
Mr. Winn and Mayor Arax.
Mr. Winn will be here shortly. Anyone want to say a prayer?
I'll say a prayer.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, Heavenly Father, thank you for gathering us here tonight. Please guide us here that lead the community with great wisdom and also great knowledge of making the right decisions up here. And continue doing what's best for the community and the people that represent it and enable faith. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, man.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Do you have anyone sign up for citizen comment?
We did, but they're not here.
They, but they're not here?
No.
Maybe they'll show up in the middle of the meeting. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in under citizen comment that didn't have the opportunity to sign up? No? Okay. Item number six, consideration of possible action in regard to change order number two for the East Main Street Drainage Project in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Counselor Scott. So, as we discussed last time, I came and presented a draft proposal on the change order for the additional drainage work as requested by council. This time, this time around, we have updated the quantities to reflect the actual field conditions on East Main Streets. And just slightly increase what I've, what the draft was from last time. The last time the drafts was around one hundred fifty-five thousand. This time the slight increase was about ten thousand dollars more due to a few additional grate systems in there to channel the water. This, this change order will complete, will serve as a closed conduit, which is a change from the open V ditch style drainage system as originally designed. Regarding the contractor, we have already visited the contractor on site. He's okay with, he's good with the quantities and so I don't see any additional changes to the change order based on our field business with the contractor and ourselves.
With this change order, we're going to be closed to the additional piping covered. But the right side, or should I say that would be the south side of the, of the street, still going to have the open for the rain, the open areas for the rain to fall into and rush under the highway and hit those pipes.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, I can, I can bring it up now. This change order does not include a framed system on the south side of the opening pipe. That's an additional cost for the, there have been some concerns about the safety of the general public or kids entering the safety, entering the open system there. But that cost is not reflected here.
Okay. Hello? Is, is there going to be a problem? I hadn't added another time.
No, it's not. I've already discussed it with the contractor, but I don't want to proceed any further until the council is satisfied with the final cost of this closed storm drain system. But I really don't anticipate the framing system to be that much condition. It won't be in a hundred thousand, that's for sure. It'll be a custom made.
Fifty thousand?
I, I need to get it to be that much. I really don't say, but if I say something, you guys might hold me.
No, I understand. Just like you said, I don't want it to be, we say we can do it and then it's possible later and then we can't do it.
Well, it would not be possible ever. Talking, there's only like eight or nine locations. I really see, generally I don't see that being a hundred fifty dollars. It may be that much. It's a, it's not that, it's not an expensive amount.
City manager, if we don't like their price, we can do it ourselves or we can go elsewhere.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Or, or is another option added to the paving project? That's always an option.
Okay. When, when do we think we're going to have this completed?
This open drainage system?
Yes.
Soon. The contractor is ready to begin work. He's, he's on hold. We cannot pursue any further on this contract. He's done all the items except there's some minor ditch excavation to the outfall or the, to the creek of Little Eskimo Creek. Pending, but that's pretty minor to this type of work here. That's the only thing left. He's ready to begin work. Once the council has signed or approved to move forward on this change order, he, he's ready to begin work. It'll take him a couple of days to order the pipe, but he's, he's ready to proceed.
And oversight on this? Who's going to have oversight?
Hans.
Okay. That'd be a good project for Marcus.
Yes.
Since he's here anyway, covering two other projects. And this takes care of every, all the concerns that we had or?
As far as I know, yes. I've spoken to some of the residents on East Main. I told them, explained the process involved. They understood the process. It's additional above and beyond the original scope of work. There's a pricing information negotiation contract that is finally council approval. So, some of the residents understand that and are patient so far. We also understand the long-term benefit once we get the paving project underway.
Okay, thank you. City manager, do you have any idea where we're at on the total cost of this project?
Off the top of my head, no, sir.
Do you know?
No, sir. I do not. We, that's something that I can, I can generate here within a week or so because it's almost considered like an audit. If I say a certain number or just make a pay estimate, this is not really accurate. I feel much more comfortable presenting the same manager and council almost a semi-audit involving the pricing and everything like that when we stand at this time.
Are the homes, are they flooding now?
No, no, sir.
So, we took care of the initial problem, which was the homes flooding?
That, that's correct. As far as I'm, I'm concerned, I've been there during rainy events. I've drawn it just now.
Can we replace water main? Can we replace sewer main?
Yes.
Replace gas main?
Right.
Install manholes, fire hydrants?
Right.
And we have a paving, a reconstruction of the road?
That's correct. What that paving project includes, which is going to be, which is going to be a credit to this existing contract is the existing man, sewer manholes are replaced now. They're going to have to be lowered during construction. And then, once we have the paving grade, they'll be raised and adjusted. And then have a cement, cement collar around it. So, the manholes are replaced now. It's not the final, the, they're in place now, but it's not the final grade. There's going to be so much justice for, to handle the paving reconstruction project.
Got you. Amanda, do you know where the numbers are at? Hey, guys, how are you?
We, we looked at the numbers for, so far for this fiscal year, what we spent.
On this specific project?
Yes. And on, it's two hundred twenty-two thousand is what we spent this fiscal year.
And we already spent the six hundred thousand dollars already allotted for this project to give them credit?
We didn't go back to the past fiscal years from Mr. Deckman. We looked at this fiscal year. And then we look at the change order. The change order had some numbers on it as well. So, the original contract for, this is just for MoCon, was four hundred sixty-eight thousand. And we paid to date going off of the change order. I mean, I had a payback form.
Do you have any concerns with us finding this money?
Not for this work at hand, no.
Four seventy, four hundred and seventy-four thousand is what we paid to date to MoCon for this drainage project.
Okay.
To date.
To date.
Yes, to date.
Answer your question, Mayor. For the numbers that are listed on the change order that you have before you, indicate a contract price of all change orders, all change orders, the pre-change orders, six hundred thirty thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. That amount is, is covered in the construction.
Okay.
So, we, you all are contemplating additional work in that area. I'm not looking at that.
Okay, well, I'm thinking this hundred and sixty thousand and then whatever it's going to cost for, what did you call it, a frame?
Framing, framing system.
The six forty's included a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Okay, so we're good. And then, no problems with reconstruction of the road?
That's a different.
Just people out here don't know?
That's fine.
I would need to look at that, Mayor.
Okay, so you're confident the money's there, no problem to do this?
Yes, sir. For the item before you, yes, sir.
Okay. It needs to be done?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and approve the change order number two for the East Main Drainage Project in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
I'll second that.
Discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call her on.
Counselor Brandon?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Counselor Science?
Yes.
Counselor Connor? Yes.
Motion passed. Just thank you. Thank you, John.
Just appreciate the Mexican copy sent to, emailed to us.
I'm sorry?
The Mexican copy.
Okay.
Senate Manager signed a copy, that way it's important to the contract.
Okay. You can do that tomorrow, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number seven, consideration of possible action in regard to hiring process for Parks and Recs Recreation Director. Any movement?
Make a motion that we consider item seven on the agenda.
I'll second that.
I'm going to let you do this because you did the honors of doing this.
Yes, Mayor, and in the short time that I've been here, I've got my attention that the city has interest in hiring Parks and Recreation Director. A little buddy position in this year's operating budget. So, I just thought that I would come forward to you and give you a little bit of an update and see if, let you know what I contemplate proceeding with and then, you know, hopefully welcome to change my mind. But basically, in a nutshell, as you see before you, the city received a total of five applications for this position. And one of those have withdrawn their application, one of those I've tried to contact several times and haven't gotten any response. There are three other candidates that were listed there that a few days, at least a few days ago when I spoke to them all had interest in potentially pursuing the position. And again, unless you all direct otherwise, I would contemplate myself as interim city manager, possibly asking one or maybe two of the department heads to assist me in doing an interview process for these three candidates and see if we could come up with a recommendation to the city council among these candidates for a potential Parks and Recreation Director. Then again, to you in the coming weeks, present a to you, give you an opportunity to meet and discuss with them how we might want to see them there. The ultimate, the ultimate consultation confirmation would be up to the council.
That's a great plan. How soon do you want to get started?
I would post today, Tuesday. I can get ahold of you tomorrow and see when I can get them in here.
How soon do you think, with everything that we have going on, do you think we really, we need them here? I think we needed them here yesterday.
Yes, sir.
I just, I, I want everybody here to know the importance of it. So.
Does this person, this person will report to the city manager, right?
Yep.
Yes.
What did he budget for this position?
Sixty thousand.
What did he budget for this position?
The salary was only sixty thousand.
Will he be residing within the city of Kennedy or is he going to be residing in a town? Is there requirements?
Can't have that requirement.
I mean, it's, it's important because if we're going to have tournaments and all kinds of stuff that field, is he going to be in San Antonio on the weekends when part of his job is running this facility? I mean, the tournaments are going to be taking part in his, in part of his job.
That's part of his job role, so he would have to be, he'd have to be available for we.
That could be a good question when they interview him, see if he's willing to relocate.
Yes, ma'am. May I certainly ask that question? I'm not an attorney. My understanding is there's limitations outside of the city manager who can be required.
Right, there is some limitations.
But it's certainly not somebody that can respond and be active and be present and on-site on a non-rural basis. That pretty well indicates to me that you need to be pretty close to camp.
Yeah, we still can't make that a requisite of the position.
Yes, sir.
I mean, he, he needs to be available and be able to be here and be where he's supposed to be, when he's supposed to be there. But the living in the, in the city cannot be a requirement of the job.
That is my understanding.
That's the way I understand the law. We've covered it before, so. That's right, right?
You are correct, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
How many employees are we going to have working out there for contracts?
Eight will be budgeted under that person, I believe.
And he'll do the hiring for those people over there? That'll be outside of those current city workers we have right now, correct?
Yes, again, at that level, ultimately, the city manager has the ultimate recruitment. But as far as the logistics for hiring, that, at that level, basically falls in department head, to the directors.
Do we all understand what we're asking out of the public work, I mean, out of the Parks and Recreation Manager? We're going to have a true Parks and Recreation Department here. It's not just maintain the field and run the kitchen. It's organization, activities for everybody in the community to do, people from outside the community to do tournaments. List goes on and on.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's spelled out pretty good in the, in the duties.
I'm good with your plan. Does anybody have a motion?
In that case, I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and take action to allow the city manager to start working on the hiring process for Parks and Recs, Parks and Recs Director.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? One more thing.
Yeah.
We'll go ahead some.
What was the plan again to get this done?
My plan, ma'am, would be to interview the three candidates that, three active candidates listed there and to make a recommendation to the city council as to hiring individuals for Parks and Recreation Director.
Brandon, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask you a question. So, what, what will be his hours of operation? Considering that baseball goal is late into the night, we have, I mean, it's going to be his complex. He's going to have to stay until everything's complete.
This is salary position?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And there's going to have to be, as with any department head in any city I've ever worked at, and having been a department head several times over, it's as needed where needed. For any reason, yeah, we can't work twenty-four hours a day.
No, you can't, but this is his.
And I'll certainly make that point clear to them that there is a significant work to do when we require.
He's going to have to be aware that his weekend is going to be full because, I mean, this is.
When I look at these qualifications of some of these people here, I'm assuming, and I know we're going to ask these questions, but if somebody has four point five years as a director of Parks and Recreation, I'm assuming they're used to these kind of things. I think they're going to educate us on some of this. We, we don't know anything. That's why we have so many questions for it. We've never had a Parks and Recreation Director. But I'm, I'm assuming that we're going to learn a lot from that person.
Yes, sir, I would think so. And, and each town's a little bit different, but the Parks and Recreation Director is an extremely busy, extremely demanding, very hands-on supervisory and getting out and doing it kind of job.
Got you.
Involves physical maintenance of the facility, it involves recreational programming, it involves interacting with leagues and school leagues and all of the above.
I mean, I understand you're going to do the interview and I'm not saying that I don't have any trust in you or anything because I believe you would do a great job picking, but for something of this caliber, first time it's going to happen in Kennedy, would it be a bad idea if the council had participated in the hiring process too? If we can go and hire a city manager, why can't we go ahead and help hire a Parks and Rec?
But didn't I understand you to say you, in your process, once you went through what you did, you were going to present your findings to us?
On all three of them and then give us the one you recommended or just the one you recommend and presented that one to us?
The last thing you said, sir, would be my thoughts coming in.
So, I mean, there could be what you thought was okay, but then somebody else is out there that we thought might be okay and. You get one, you get one shot. I mean, you want to make the right, the right choice for something this big. Especially off of a seven point five million dollar bond that we're going off of this. I mean.
Have you looked at this? This? Yeah.
I didn't want to go.
Are we, where are we as far as, when do we foresee the complex being done? Completely done? What was the, do we have a timeline for that?
As far as completely with buildings and all that, I don't.
I'm going to help you out here.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Everybody knows it's been delayed.
Yeah.
That's not a secret. Every time we give anybody an exact date, all it does is slap us in the face. Nobody has an exact date right this minute. I wish I did, but.
So, at the beginning of the project, we didn't have a completion date? Like, before?
They had a, they had a date that they gave us.
And then they?
Then, and.
They've gone over that date.
Yeah, it was supposed to be finished last month, but, you know, they had weather and then they also had vandalism that tore up equipment and they had to get new equipment down and get equipment fixed. We're still having that problem with stuff being bothered at the park. But it's, the park is moving forward, but part of the process is, like, tonight, we've got something on our agenda for the sports complex. You know, they can't move forward until we give them the go-ahead to spend the money. Every time they need to spend money, they've got to call us to approve it so they can move forward. So, all of that takes time. But if you go over there and look, you can see the prog, you can see the progress. It's moving really, really good.
They were laying some turf down on one of the things.
We've set idle here at the City of Kennedy for the past six months. Pretty much nothing done.
Well, I'm just asking because I don't know if it's not complete, if we're not near completion. I mean, if you can explain to me why we need it now.
What, the Parks Director?
Yeah, I mean.
Because he needs to know, he needs to know how it went together. He needs to know where the sprinkler stuff is at. He need to know where the drainage stuff is at. He need to know all that information about that complex when he's out there. So, when there's a problem, he can know what's, needs to be done for a resolution. And having him involved in the, in the process is very crucial. That allows him to be able to be an actual asset for us instead of someone who's got to go find somebody else and check with somebody else and call somebody else. You know, we should have had him when it started.
This is the most important thing. Leslie's absolutely correct, but right now, wouldn't you feel better if one of us could answer your question accurately? Instead of nobody here having an answer? That's what that director should be here for. When Little League calls and says, who is Little League calling? Do you have any idea who they're calling right now?
Well, that's why I think I brought that up before. We have no oversight. We don't have anybody.
That's the whole reason you would hire this person as soon as possible, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, yeah, it's kind of like in the middle of the project.
It's not in the middle of the project. So, right now, there's nobody at City Hall that knows what's going on with it.
Well, who's in charge of parks? I mean, shouldn't that person at least know what's going on, at least report back?
I would assume they would. I, I would assume they would, but I'm trying to answer your question. Why do we need to hire now is because there's nobody to answer these questions. There's no one for the Little League to call. There's no one for the high school to call. There's no one for anybody to call on the parks. It's just like what we're doing now. Maybe, I guess, I don't know. Do you know? Who knows? There's no, there's no order here. I mean, zero.
And it's, the sooner you put a person in place, the more effective that person can be. He can get to know the community. He can get to know who he needs to talk to. He can get to know what needs to take place. But if you wait till the day it's ready to open, he's scrambling the whole time. He or she is scrambling the whole time.
I don't think we would do that. This person, if we hire, they're still going to have to give their two weeks wherever they're working now. They decide they're going to relocate. We still have to give them time to do that. So, there's still time for them to do the things they need to do to come here and be successful. I mean, there's, we still have to give them time to do all that. I mean, if it takes them a month, it takes us a month to interview and get them moved and get, or whatever he's going to do or get is two weeks. By then, we're already a month in. We're not going to go hard tomorrow, but, you know, we need to get this process going.
I mean, all my experience comes from the lumber industry. And we hired store managers a month before we built, before we started doing the store. We knew we was going to do a store, so we would hire a manager a month before and start training that manager before we broke ground on that store. Then when we broke ground, that manager's on-site and they actually know something about how the company works and how things happen because they've been in other stores for that month prior, or the two months prior to breaking ground on that store. This deal, we've already broke ground. We're already sixty-five percent done. And he's going, he or she is going to come in and have to catch up with what's done, what's been done and be able to be effective as a leader of other people and answer to us and the city manager. But, you know.
If we don't hire, it's another delay.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not feeling comfortable, but.
I mean, we've already budgeted the money for this fiscal year. The money is there to pay the person.
Yeah.
So, other than the salary, what would be the reason for not putting that person in place? We've already budgeted the position, so we've already, we're already ahead of the game because it's beyond that fiscal year. We didn't hire him at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, we're not going to spend the money that we have allocated for that salary this year. That won't happen. And what else, what, where, where could it be? What would be the downside of that, to having that person in place and having them get ready to do what they're here to do? Our budgets, we've, we've already budgeted for him, right?
Yes, sir.
And fiscal year started October one, right? So, this is February, so we've got November, December, January. We've got four months of salary that we didn't have to pay. And we probably have another month because it'd take that long to at least get them hired. And we're way ahead of the game.
And 60 is the max, right?
That's the budget.
Is there any other discussion?
In between time, when he's, when there's no tournaments or nothing going on, what would the, what would the city manager be directing him to do? Where would he fall under?
Brandon, this is something that is a full-time job, and it's gonna require-
He's gonna be, he'll be taking care of the park. That's what he'll be doing.
This isn't just a weekend deal. I don't, I think that's the misconception. It may start as a weekend full of tournaments, but it's not gonna last for too long. I mean, we have lots of things going on at the park. The basketball league, soccer league, all kinds of stuff going on out there. There's nobody to direct these things. We can't do those all on one weekend. There's things gonna be going on during the week, all, all kinds of stuff. So I don't think the guy's gonna have, or the girl is gonna have any time to look for something to do. I think there's gonna be more than enough. I mean, the tournament runs 12 hours on a Saturday and 12 hours on a Sunday. That's 24 hours right there. That's just the days of the tournament. Anyway, um, just know that if we don't have a director really soon, it's gonna be one serious delay. I think he got pretty good qualifications. 4.5 years as a Parks Director, Parks and Recreation's Director. Another year as a Parks Director, 2.5 years recreational specialist. Another one has 2.5 years Sports Director, Aquatic Swimming. I don't know if we have a swimming pool around here, but... A manager of YMCA in San Antonio. This is a second candidate. Two years Recreation Supervisor. I mean, those two look pretty good to me. The third one, no recreation experience, so, I mean, a community guy would narrow it down to those two. So, I mean, I think those are the shed qualifications.
I mean, we can also, once they look at these people and interview them, they can say, "Okay, you know, your start date's gonna be," I mean, we could say May. I mean, we don't have to tell them, "Okay, you have to start tomorrow." I mean, we can give them a start date. We don't have to have them start, you know, after their interview they're hired. I mean, but we want them as soon as possible so they can start. So when the park's ready, they already have set book and ready to go.
We, they need to start immediately. We are so far behind, there's no plan there. And, and just so everybody understands, it's another delay, that's it. We either hire somebody right now, as quickly as we can, somebody good, or we just let everybody know it's another delay, 'cause that's what it is. I mean, that's the truth.
What's this person's probation period gonna be? 90 days? I mean, you can't hire them straight on and not give them a probation period.
I believe the city policy-
All of that stuff falls under the city policy. The, the, all of that's the same. It's the same for anybody that the city hires. They have a certain amount of period of, of probation, and all of that's in the handbook.
And so when they're on probation, they're gonna get the, how's that? Allocated $60,000, they're gonna go straight into it with no-
They'll go, whatever their base salary is, that's what they'll be paying.
And then when they get off probation, everything just stays the same?
Everything stays the same. Probation-
Not the basis they hire, you start off at one rate, and then once you pass the probation period, then you get that rate that you're told you're gonna move up to. This is just a straight, you're hired probation, bam, and then after probation, you stay at the same rate.
He has up to $60,000. If he starts that person at $50,000 and they agree to do that, he could very well do exactly what you're asking him to do. He could say, "Yeah, you're gonna get $55,000." All of that's a possibility.
'Cause what I don't wanna see is, you start at $60,000, make your probation, and get another, I don't know-
He can't do it. You don't have to. I mean, you, you are the guys that approved that budget.
$60,000 is it.
$60,000 is all there is in it.
I'm not authorized to change, buddy. I have to look, look what's on there.
Is there any other discussion?
Can we, I don't know.
Can we amend this to say, starting off probation at $50,000, or that has to be something that's decided-
That's something with the policy. It can't be any different than what we're doing now.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to help you to understand. The city has established policies. You can't change the policy for one hire and have it different for another hire. It's all the same. The policies are the policies.
Does this come back in my decision earlier and before, don't wanna see?
Well, if, if, if we don't, if they don't do the job, you fire them. That's the problem. We are too, we, we get people and they don't do the job, and we just keep, keep keeping them and saying, "Well, eventually they gonna get better." Well, if they're not the right person, fire them. Texas is an at-will state. You don't need no big roof law to fire. You just do it. If they're not the right person, they've worked for us for 30 days, they hadn't got the job done, they don't know what they're doing, they're not learning. This ain't working. Thank you for trying, we're gonna move on. That's it.
And they're back at square-
We're back at square one, we find another one. That's, that's, that's the world. That's the way we do it. That's why we, that's the way we do it.
Is there any other discussion?
And these are the only three applicants that we had, or the applicants that we got out of the posting.
You had five.
That's correct.
When was this posted? Do we have any idea? 90 days, six months? I'm gonna say six months. How, how far was it?
I think it was posted in December.
Okay.
And it was just in the newspaper, which is-
NTMO.
NTMO.
See, guys, we dragged our feet around here too much. We, we, we put too much stuff in people that were here previously. This was something that was already supposed to have been done. And I guarantee you, that guy wasn't gonna bring it to you and say, "Hey, do you, do you wanna take my recommendation?" He was just gonna hire him and give him $65,000 even though the budget says 60. There's living proof, so this isn't a surprise. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call over.
Mr. Breonis?
No.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
No.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Sutton?
Yes. Thank you. Item number eight, consideration and possible action for payment of partial payment three for the Larry Keeson Sports Complex, sports field and site construction to Hellas Construction Incorporated. Any amount of $1,000,016,948.88. Bless you. Any movement?
I'd like to discuss item number eight.
I'll second.
Discussion. Uh, presentation?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, this is an item, an existing contract of the Hellas Construction project that you all are a little aware of. It's within the contract, routine, progress payment, for one month's worth of work. It's within the allocated budget. Typically, something like this is something that might be approved administratively within city staff, city manager. Due to the amount, that it's over a million dollars, I did want to at least, uh, therefore counsel, let you all at least be aware of the amount involved.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. The engineer has reviewed and testified that the work that's being submitted for payment has been completed satisfactorily. And again, a large administrative item, but I did want the amount, I did want to grant it before counsel and let you all be aware of it before I took the administrative act. I would ask that you would consider authorizing me to execute the approved progress payment for the amount stated for Hellas Construction for the sports complex project.
Thank you, sir. You guys have any questions? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve the very, um, partial payment for the Larry Keesley Sports Complex for $1,000,016,948.88.
I'll second that, sorry.
Discussion.
This all comes out of the 7.5 million bond that we have, correct?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please call over.
Counselor Breonis?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Counselor Stein?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Item number nine, consideration and possible action in regard to an interloable agreement regarding law enforcement training for law enforcement, first responders, and emergency service personnel located in Carren City, Carren County, Texas. Any movement?
Make a motion to consider item nine on the agenda.
I'll second it.
Presentation. Anybody have a presentation?
Do you have any comments?
They wanted, um, the fire department wanted to speak in public comments.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks for being here, men and women.
So what we'll do is, we just wanna show you on this video right quick. It's something we put together for y'all, as y'all know about the training facility in Carren City. We've been talking about this for a while already. Yeah, I'm sure some of y'all have already been probably over there. Hopefully, if y'all have. If y'all haven't, we will, you know, we're more than glad to show y'all. But this is some of the trainings that Carren City has been inviting us to here the past few months. And so we wanted to kinda show y'all what we've been doing, how it's benefiting us and, you know, benefiting our fire department, stuff like that. So as we're going through the video, we'll be kinda explaining a little bit to y'all, if Justin can get it going here. We'll kinda explain to y'all a little bit of, of what's happening and how that, you know, benefits us and, and our city, right, of course? 'Cause we do this for our city, so we'll kinda explain a little bit as soon as we can get this rolling here.
If you can't get the video, click, just try to show pictures if you can. How many of us have been out there? Any of us?
I've been.
I know them. I was scared to go to the third story, but I've been out there.
I went all the way to the top.
I went to the deck.
I'm lying.
Got all the ladders.
It was pretty amazing. I was pretty impressed on, um, the part where you guys are gonna have, be in there when they're smoky. Other than that, it was kinda cool how that was all laid out. How many times have y'all been out there to train?
I've trained out there several times already. Been out there to help with labor and, uh, training.
How are you, how are y'all liking it?
We love it, loving it.
Has anybody else been out there besides you guys in Carren City?
Not yet.
No, not yet.
Not yet?
So kinda just to give our demonstration too, though, of how we use to train. And we've done it in Carren City multiple times, so they get a house, you know, donate or something. And once they go and make sure everything's good, uh, we go in there and we actually do fires and, you know, I mean, you're in a older structure. So we do have control over that, but we don't have control over it, you know, and it's a life thing, it's fire. Anything can happen in a second, you know, and we don't have the capability of stopping it without actually getting out and, you know, putting water, stuff like that, on it. This facility right here actually gives us that control. You know, we actually have a tower that someone's gonna be overlooking. We actually can just put smoke and give that effect. And somewhat of a fire in there with fire-protecting walls, so it's not gonna completely go up. It also has special vents in there if something was to happen, or, you know, something with all the smoke in there. It actually just sucks all that air out and takes out within so many seconds, correct? So that, this is a little safer kinda type of thing to do. Not just that, uh, we did an exercise last night, actually, which was more for our health kinda type deal. We actually went up the steps. And it was an action eye-opener for a lot of us. You know, we have a lot of hotels that we just recently got in here over the past couple of years, and we went up three stories carrying an actual pack of hose and back down, dragging a dummy. You know, stuff that we weren't really able to do before. So not many hotels will let you in there going through their stairs, you know, carrying hose. I mean, this thing has a lot of different, uh, deals.
Brandon was looking at my question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and we couldn't get it to work, but, um, a lot, I mean, I know y'all, I don't know if y'all, y'all didn't see it, but we had a video where it actually shows, they have a fog system, which actually fogs it a lot. I don't know if you talked about that, Austin, a little bit, did you?
Not the fog.
Yeah, the fog, the fog system, what it does is simulate like a house being engulfed in smoke. And, I mean, sometimes we have to go into these houses. I mean, maybe for rescue, maybe to find somebody, maybe, whatever. And so it simulates that, and the fog is like, it, it's so thick in there, I mean, you put your hand in front of you and you can't see your hand. So it really does simulate a house being engulfed in smoke and, you know, and so, and that's beneficial because it, 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 that teaches us a lot to trust each other. You know, it teaches us to trust each other, that when we're gonna go in there, we know that we got each other's backs, and so that's one of the benefits of that training center. There's numerous things, like Austin was saying, that we have done over there that have really benefited us, and, I mean, it actually motivates, it has motivated a lot of us to, to wanna get better and to wanna train more and to wanna do more, so, uh, we wanted to, and I was hoping we would show y'all the presentation, but if, if maybe so, I can show it the next time y'all come. I'll have it already.
Email to us if you want to.
Yeah, I can do that.
And is it fair to say, guys, that there's so much that you're gonna be able to do with each and every other department, with the county, within the whole county, that you've never been able to do before? Yes. No matter if we took a thousand dollars a week and sent each, just one firefighter every week for 52 weeks a year, we still wouldn't, that's the part of the training that we would never receive, right?
That's right.
But we had that opportunity to do it here.
And it's close.
And I ask these questions because I want people to understand, I, I too, at one time, thought that we should have built our own fire, uh, our own training center. But once I went out there and saw it and it was explained to me, it makes complete sense. And that, that's the truth.
The other thing that, the other thing that it does, it allows them to work with other first responders, which, like he said, it builds confidence in them, but being able to work with other first responders, like when we had the big Walmart fire and we had all those different people that came down to help. Those people, you know, they have never worked with each other, so if they're able to train together, when they're working together, they're not stumbling over each other. They got each other's back and nobody's gonna get hurt. And the chance of somebody getting hurt is greater, is less than it is not having the training. It's a great facility. Um, they've done a terrific job with the money that they had to work with, and if you had been out there and saw it, you really oughta go. If you're gonna give an opinion on this, you need to go see the training center. Because it is flipping amazing what they can do, and with, learning how to handle, uh, all trucker fires, learning how to handle rig fires, um, learning how to handle stack fires, fires that, at the, at the, at the-
Disposal.
At the disposals, the natural gas. All of this stuff is stuff that they'd have never been able to train on here. And they can do all that out there and learn how to do it and do it safely and have control, where they can shut the fire off when they need to. And in case something goes wrong, they can shut it down in a second. It's a great, great complex.
And one of the biggest things that I've learned myself as a firefighter out there is learning the capabilities of everybody else around me. And when you get to work with departments like Carren City that are close by and all that, you get to learn their capabilities as individual firefighters. So in other words, what I'm trying to say is, if I show up to a house fire, I already know that I've worked with those guys so much. I know who can do certain things and who can't, and our main thing, no matter what we do, is safety. We want everybody to get there and everybody to get back home. And so when you be able to be knowledgeable of everybody's capabilities, you know not to send certain people to do certain things so that keeps them safe. And we get to do that out there. We get to work amongst each other. We see people's physical capabilities, their mental, you know, as far as being mental. There's a lot of people in here that are not, that don't like to do certain things, and there's nothing wrong with that. We don't, we don't dislute anybody for, because you don't wanna do anything. It teaches us that we can, we know that person can't do that, so therefore, there's other things he can do. And so that's one thing that's been teaching me a lot for, as far as learning all my brothers and sisters' capabilities, to be able to keep them safe. So if I see something that nobody else may be caught, I'll be able to say it, and a lot of other guys could probably do the same thing, say, "Hey, we don't need him to do that. He can do this, but we don't wanna get hurt." And that's one thing that's been teaching me personally, and I'm pretty sure many others would say the same, but that's, to me, is one of the biggest things that this thing is doing. It's drawing unity, of course, and that's one thing we preach a lot, is unity. And this, in the communities, unity with our cities, unity. Unity's the main thing. That's what's gonna make everything work. And that's one thing it's doing for our fire departments. This unity is drawing us so much closer to each other, to familiarizing each, one another with, with each other, that it's like, it's like we're just one big, it's- each other, that it's like, it's like we're just one big, just team that's just so knowledgeable of each other. And that's, there's nothing better than that. There's, and, and there's nothing, if you ever show up to a fire and you're fighting a fire and you know you can trust anybody you're working with, that's, there's nothing better than, there's not a feeling better than that. To know that you're gonna go into something that not, most people won't go into, but you know you can trust the people you're going there with. And you do that with training. And that's where, that's where it starts. It starts with your training, building that confidence and that trust in one another. So.
Juan?
I have a question. So you said that you guys would get a house and they would donate. Typically, how many times a year would that happen for you guys that you were able to put a house on fire and go work at it together?
Every other year.
Maybe, yeah.
Every one, every other year.
But, I don't know how to say that. Here the last few years, the last two years, us and city had water problems. I've had like two or three of them at that time and I had to turn it down. We were short on water.
So this facility would actually benefit you guys, because you guys go out more often than just waiting for a house to come available, or water to be available to you guys? Because you guys are gonna have your own water line out there, right?
They have their own well.
Yeah, your own well out there, right?
Also has a classroom training that's still being completed. So we're gonna have a lot of classroom time, be able to do different classes in there. You know, people actually come down and like you said, not just us or Caron City, but the whole county, you know, be able to sit in the classroom together and learn on, you know, a certain object or deal there. So, and there's other stuff that are coming up too that I haven't seen. There's supposed to be a car out there, so we're gonna ask some car fires, different ways to, you know, approach car fires. Like you said, Tanger, they're talking about confined space rescue, so I mean, because you never know when that can happen.
Has the ambulance guys gone out there with you guys and trained with y'all yet? The ambulants or any other firefighters out there with you guys?
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this out there, I'm gonna do it just so everybody understands that the question was asked, okay? Because there's a lot of people that don't really understand where you guys get your money from. Okay, they, they have ideas of where they think it comes from, but they're not really correct when they say that. Do you know where these guys get their money from? Rural Fire, Rural Fire Fund?
From the variety of sources, I imagine.
Right, but it's not a, it's not a burden to the taxpayer. We're, we're not spending money from water and sewer, is my point. This money is for the fire department. We received the money through the county, correct? My understanding is they collect that money, they disperse it amongst you guys. For how many years did you guys go with the baby budget? Many, many years, right?
Nineteen thirty?
You have the money and you've always had the money to use for these things. This board did budget that money for you, to your contribution. They did it actually two years in a row. It wasn't used one year, hopefully it's gonna get used this year. I'm just waiting for our attorney to finish going through there so he can give us some answers. But this money is not what we think, it's not coming away from, we can't spend it on the streets. We can't put it in the water, on water mains. This can only be used for the fire department. So I don't know why we would say, no, we can't spend the money. But I don't get to make the decision.
And that's why we're here, we're just here to show y'all that we, we really, we really are, I would say, like, we, we really are taking a lot of pride in what we're doing. We've got a really good, great group of guys right now here in Kennedy. I know, I don't know if y'all met, a lot of the new guys and the ones that've been here, but we gotta, I, I will say a hundred percent, I, we got, we got a great group of guys in our fire department. I've only been here three years, I can speak on before me, but since I've been here, I've seen a lot of good things happening and a lot of things that are, you know.
Yes, the Trump.
Yes, the Trump. Yeah. And so, and, and that, and I say that with, you know, like I said, I take a lot of pride in what we're doing and many of, many of these guys, we're all taking a lot of pride in what we're doing right now with the fire department. And we just wanna excel because it, ultimately, like I said again, at the end, it's for our community. It's not for us, we, you know, we, we're doing it to try to better ourselves for our community.
James, I wish you could have seen that video because last night we just saw so much heart in all of the guys, both Kennedy and Caron City, supporting each other through our, you know.
Yeah, I, I wish I could see it too. You know, the, the first thing, every time a whistle go off, and, and this is no joke, and I know it's only one fire, but it was the most serious fire to ever hit Carons County, was the new park fire. And these guys will share with you, while other people were riding around making their videos and criticizing the city, ask them who we're shredding for them so they could stage their truck. I mean, we didn't have to do that. We couldn't get ahold of our own employees to go do those things, you know?
Yeah.
So when, when we talk about working together, I, I wish I could see that video because I, I've been there too.
Yeah, it was, it was really something to see, you know, everybody just cheering each other on, you know? And you can do it, you can do it, you know, I mean, just, it, it was, it was a great feeling to see everybody.
And we're glad that we can, we have people over there.
There was twenty-six, sorry, twenty-six of our guys that were out there between Caron City and Kennedy and not one of them did not, not one of them gave up. We had everyone start and complete and finish the course. So it was a good, it was a good practice.
It sounds like it, I've heard nothing but this stuff from our guys.
I know, I've been out.
But thank you for that.
I'm, I'm ready to get it done.
I am too, I'm just waiting on a call phone. He better not have any bad news with my caravan here.
But I have the interlocal agreement that, that Carons County, Central, Central City, it's meant to have all the parties sign.
One second. Hey, can you send that to me?
Yes.
We'll, we'll, we'll put it on the page.
We're gonna put it on our page.
Okay, all right, thanks.
They sent one interlocal agreement following the parties to participate in the, I guess, in the training facility thing. So it's not, it's, the general interlocal agreements, I made some recommendations that each party will have the ability to attach an addendum to the agreement because my understanding is these could be a hundred thousand dollars. We gotta see what we can get for it. And that addendum will specify what the city is going to receive. And because the interlocal as it is, it's, it's too general, but if we could attach an addendum between Carons County and the city, then we'll see what we get for our money. And because it's, it's fire staying, some of the other agencies are not gonna contribute as much as the city.
Correct.
So we have certain expectations with regard to our use, you know, use who, our, our police departments, so forth and so on, be able to utilize the facility.
Chief, has any of you guys used the facility yet?
Not yet, sir. As I understand it, they have well enough facilities for us to use our SWAT training as well as classrooms as well, if that's in the plan.
So how far out do you think we are? I know they have a lot of stuff they need to do and I know that we have to protect the city, but we need to set some kind of timeframe.
I've, I've contacted the county attorney and she, she was out last Friday and today. So I should be getting touchable this week. I added some, some provisions in her proposed agreement. I don't think, I think there, I don't think there's anything that would be objectionable. But I want to make sure that I understand what the city's gonna get for their money. And they, they talk about voluntary contributions. That's not, that's a little too vague for me, it has to be. We pay this amount every five years, they ask each agency to pitch in a total of ten thousand dollars for maintenance. That's, won't be very much if they buy deeply among the agencies. But I think the, the general one's okay, but we just have to add our own, again, addendum to these facilities against what we get.
Okay.
And I'd say, I'd say, depends when the county gets back to me, then, then we have to, I say, within thirty days, we should have something. That is, then be able to, we're sent to the council for execution.
Okay, um, how, how are you with that, Charlie? Thirty days?
The longer you wait, the longer it's gonna take out, there's all I can say. We, we're, we're in a hopefully, I don't know, because all of our money is tied up in the payment we had to make on that tower. All the money is supposed to go into other projects so we can complete the facility. It's just sitting in limbo until we can get something moving here.
Are you waiting for thirty, hundred, four thirty days?
Are you waiting for contributions from Gillette, Rungy, people like that to try to match what we're trying, what we're putting in?
Yeah. Uh, we, we are putting in a certain amount.
Okay.
I wanna make sure.
We know what that amount is, but what, what precisely are you expecting out of?
The county has to detail how much we get for that. Because if we put in, let's say, a hundred thousand, someone puts in ten, do we get the same, the same resources or do we get more resources or do we have more time there? It just depends.
I think that where we're, where we're at right now is everybody can use this facility, it don't matter, the dollar, everyone's gonna get the same trainings. That way, if we do have another new park, we're ready to go and everybody's on the same page. We don't want, I mean, I understand certain cities can't put in what we're putting in, but that's, that's, that's where.
Yeah, that's none of our business what the other cities put in.
Well, we have to explain to our citizens.
What we're spending this money on, that's all.
That's not, that's not the citizens' money anyways, you stated earlier. It can only be used for the fire anyways, so. They're gonna get training for your hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah, but you need to explain that to them. All they're gonna say is a hundred thousand dollars.
They're gonna hear him say that.
I wish it was that easy, but.
It hasn't been that hard for Caron City, put in a hundred fifty thousand plus land plus water plus everything else and open it up to everybody in the county with no questions asked. I'm, I'm glad my city's not that conservative and worried about what we're gonna get for it. They're just trying to help everybody in the county and work with everybody. And I think y'all need to step up and decide that y'all need to do the same thing because we're not holding back. If, if y'all don't wanna be a part of it, we'll move on either way, but.
No, it's, it's, we have to have an agreement of what we're gonna pay, how we're gonna pay.
You pad it for how long, sir?
And you went back and forth with Jennifer several times already on that agreement. I thought y'all were already squared away on that. We were here tonight.
It's, it's, there's, there's still, there's still, there's still some things you have to agree to.
Exactly.
Make sure that we.
And you padded for how long?
It's been, wow.
It's been a while.
And you finally called Friday because there's no rush on this end. We're trying to get a project finished.
And we're trying to do it too. And I'm, I'm sorry that it's not completed. We're gonna work as hard as we can in my office to get it done within thirty days. Now, with regard to the legalities on the interlocal agreement, who's liable for what? That has to be spelled out.
Oh, that's fine, but we need to get on it.
I understand that.
And it's in the limbo.
I understand that.
Okay, um, any other discussion?
I would like to see this back on, on an agenda in thirty days.
Yeah, in thirty days, yes, sir.
Because I, I do think it's something we need to get, we need to get done. This is second, this is second year that we hadn't got it done, so we need to get this done.
Hey, let's go ahead and post a meeting, special meeting for March third. It's less than thirty days, but can we do something? That's three weeks.
I'll try, we'll see, we'll see what we come up with.
March third, please, special meeting.
And it, and it takes two parties to.
I, I know, they have to be available for you to do it.
That's correct.
I understand.
I understand that the county attorney is just doing this for us to help us get this thing written up. It's still, it's gonna be up to everybody to agree on. She's, the county has no play or ownership in this. She just agreed to try to help us out and get this written up for us and, and so she'll, any recommendations that are made, she'll talk to us about it. I mean, we don't have a problem with it. We're here to work with everybody, that's what we've been doing from state one.
I have a question. We, we had spoke when I went out to see it and we talked and you told me that we were gonna do the agreement and then later you all were gonna meet with all the different groups that are gonna be involved and have paid. And then you guys were gonna sit down and discuss what the terms were gonna be as far as how you're gonna use it, who's gonna use it. Did we not talk about that?
Yes, we definitely wanna get department heads from every department to sit down and make up a set of rules about, you know, booking time there, you know, what you can and can't do, you know, things will have to be done. Burns in the building, I mean, limiting the temperature to them, different things like that that all have to be written down. So, yeah, we'll work on that.
Have you guys already got that part written down as far as? Not yet.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna start, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff to do. We can do that while we have other stuff. I mean, y'all are okay with coming to meetings, right?
Yeah, the only way we can get stuff done is show up at these meetings and, you know, in, in, you know, I'm tired of meetings, to be honest. You know, today I didn't even get the hands to go home and shower, I still got a load of trash on my trailer, but I didn't wanna be late and I still was late, but.
I gotta go back to work.
Hey, I understand, that's what I'm saying. So we gonna, we gonna do what we gotta do to run the city and to get done what we need to get done. We took these offices to try to make things better for our city and that's what, that's why we're sitting here and that's what we're gonna do. So if it needs, and we gonna have to have a meeting, we gonna show up. And we need to get it done. I'm, like I said, I, I, I'm so excited about this.
I wish I could say, I think it's just now, but if we just have to have these last little pieces together and you guys can be patient with us for three more weeks, I mean, I know you guys have been waiting a long time. I know y'all have. It's a great place. I, I think it's amazing for you guys, that if we can get just this last piece from the county with, of the little things that he needs and then we can get this approved with you guys.
And I just, I just wanna say that I think, you know, kind of what Charlie said, I'm not trying to be in any way negative, but, I mean, it, it is true. I mean, we, we, we need to start moving a little faster when we do things because, I mean, everybody wants to sit here and do, say this and this and this, but we don't take no time when we get calls, we get out there and do what we gotta do. We don't wait it on for ten, fifteen minutes, an hour, say, oh, I'm gonna eat right quick and then go put out this fire. We do what we gotta do, but you know, I mean, at the, ultimately, in the end, we do what we gotta do on our half to try to get better and we expect the same from, from our, from our city to back us up on that.
And to be helpful, it'd be helpful if you have rules and policies that apply to all the agencies. Because if you don't have those, then the, the agreement is what are you agreeing to? What are the, what, who's gonna go there? What times? How much, how are they allocated? If you guys haven't figured that out, it's not gonna help you very much.
If you haven't gone to go visit it to see that any department can be out there at the same time, there is something for everybody to do, you wouldn't be asking that question.
I, I absolutely agree, but you have to have something written in policies and procedures. Unfortunately, we, you know, we have to do that in order to document what's going on. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's always a pain for an interlocal agreement.
Do you think that's necessary for, when we get a call to come help Kennedy, we need to have all these policies and agreements and everything before we come over?
It's just for the training center.
No, but when we cut call for a fire, shouldn't we have some kind of agreement the same way?
Well, what I'm saying is we need to see it and we're asking, please.
So that's what he's asking?
But have you pushed your city to have the same kind of agreement before they call us to help on a call?
I, I don't understand what you're saying.
You know exactly what I'm saying.
No, I do.
If we get called to come help Kennedy on a fire, you, should we have all these same kind of agreements and understandings and rules before we even come over here?
There's a, there's a process and procedure of why you come over here. I imagine something's written down when you come over here for when there's a call.
Okay, we're gonna end the subject, guys.
So, so I, I don't wanna disagree with you, but it takes, you know, two to develop a property that's around there. Have you, have you read the interlocal agreement?
But, that's what you just said, right? You said five, five years it's paid ten thousand?
That's what this says. That's what this says. That's what the, I'm just going with what this says.
Yeah, that...
That's after, that's when he started.
That's what I'm saying. We're asking for the portion we paid now, and we're asking for the actual interlocal agreement after. That's what we're signing. We're signing for the, to help finish that project.
That's correct, but the city has a little more procedures on that. If we get a good interlocal agreement, we've reached it, then everything works fine. We're not saying we're not gonna do it, and we're not gonna prepare it.
And that's what we're trying to say on our end too, that this has been how long? You know, we still can't come up with an agreement?
Yes, we...
You know, and so, we're putting ourselves off, you know, and, and you know what, Chief and Crasher, is that they're still humbly inviting us to come over every week to train. And I don't really think, knowing Charlie Mottick, knowing that fire department, I don't think they're doing it for just so we can get, they can get money out of us. They're doing it because they're trying to build what we're trying to build here, and that's something that needs to be worked on in a lot of places around here.
And I absolutely, absolutely...
Unity and getting things done.
I know, but you gotta understand, it's not ours either, Jito. And if we write a check, right, and you're not there, and Charlie's not there, then what is the actual agreement? If you're not there, Charlie's not there, I'm not here, what is the agreement? I understand what you're saying. We have to know what we're getting for it. I don't have a problem with that. I don't care what anybody else pays. All I care about is what Kennedy Fire Department gets, how the city's protected, and that's it.
So, those things that we...
But if we're not here, there's no contract, there's no agreement, who knows the rules? It's just like a divorce. Nobody knows anything.
We had talked, like you said, when I went out seeing, you talked about those rules and things that you guys were gonna meet his department. Why don't you guys go ahead and do that? Get something down on paper so when we can present it to him, and he can feel more confident saying, yeah, you guys go ahead and let's do this, instead of just seeing it blindly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but you just have to understand that we're doing this work ourselves. We're spending so much time out there. I'm going from work, I don't know how many hours a week, doing different things, and we have people out there pouring semen or whatever. We do a lot of it ourselves. I'm out there all the time, and so, getting a lot of this other stuff is taking a back burner. You know, we started working on this interlocal agreement months ago. I know the way it's written right now was written at least four months ago. Sent over here for corrections, additions, recommendations, so we could get this in motion four months ago, and we're saying, oh, I called them Friday to see what we could do. This is the problem.
We just got this, what?
Four months ago.
Yeah, we're just right during the holidays, if I remember correctly.
Been ready for quite a while.
That was four months ago. That would've been November, December, January, February.
And this is, I understand it takes time, and that's why we started early, and that's where we're at. If somebody can get moving on it...
This isn't an excuse, guys. Take it for what it's worth, okay? But this is one of the remnants from the past six months of the city of Kennedy. It doesn't help you, and it danger doesn't help us, but that's the truth.
It never hurts to have, it never helps to have turnover. I understand that. It makes it tough.
I mean, as soon as you made me aware, I said, hey, wait two weeks. I thought about that. I said, man, we can't do that. I visited with the fire department, and they reinforced what you said. We had to meet, uh, we're gonna do it again on the third. I honestly don't think that, I think it could've been done. I think that if we wouldn't have had some of the issues we had, it probably could've been done. No excuses, but that's what I think it is.
You need to move forward from here.
Yeah, and that's it. It is what it is right now, and that's what we're gonna have to do it.
Whatever submitted to the county attorney, I'm sure she'll be calling, and we'll go over it, and we're open to whatever agreement makes everybody happy. We're trying to, we're trying to get everybody involved in this. We don't have to. We want to, you know?
So, you're staying away from the old way of doing business?
Yeah, because years ago, you'd have this. Two years ago, this would've been done already, but then somebody would've been in a DA's office, because that's just the way business was done. We don't do it anymore that way. We make sure that everything's supposed to be, it's how it's supposed to be.
And it's not only to protect us, but it's to protect you guys. You guys have put a lot into this already, and so, we wanna protect you too.
You don't wanna be in a situation where all of us have gone, and all the folks over there says what's what is gone. Charlie's retired, and somebody else comes in and says, well, you guys can't be over here all this much 'cause there's nothing saying that y'all supposed to even be here. You know, once it's all down...
And that's what the interlocal agreement's supposed to be doing. We just gotta get it moving.
Yeah.
That's all we're at.
I think they need a little bit more specifics, I think, is what we're asking for is just more specific, you know?
And that's why I was sent over here for recommendations. I mean, county attorney said, hey, I'm gonna write up what I can, we'll send it over. Somebody, she sent out to other people, other recommendations came back, she made those changes. It's up to everybody to just get in there what they want.
Aren't you waiting on us specifically?
Yeah.
Everybody else is out there in a little bit?
I'll give my part, my changes to the county attorney this week. She'll have them. This is, and then we have to work up an addendum that addresses the city specifically. But this general interlocal can be, can be looked at. And I don't know what the other agencies have proposed with theirs, but if we get what the city expects out of this, it could be an addendum, and then the city passes it, and then that's fine.
So, with your other department, the other city department heads to start working on that rule, and just so we can have some things, okay, to add into this, so we meet in March, we have that piece too, or he'll have it before then, so we can say, okay, here it is. They've given me everything. We can say yes. Can you get that to her tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow, no. I just had it here in...
Wednesday or...
This week, I'd say this week.
I really, honestly, I don't know if it really matters to me. When you get it done, it's almost going back to the third, and we're moving forward. That's all I'm concerned with. And I know your job is to protect the city. I'm completely grateful for that. But these guys, they've been misled sometimes.
Well, I'll get it to Dennis as quick as I can. I'll send it over.
What else do you want to do?
I, all we need from you really on is I hope that you guys understand. I mean, I really hope you do.
Well, yeah, I mean, like everybody said, we understand. I understand, I understand what he's trying to do, just, I mean, fill up your...
Right.
Get with your other city's department heads, like the chiefs. Get with, you guys start sitting down, discussing what those, those regulations are gonna be. Get all that on paper, even if it's not, you know, this is, you know, get it down on paper briefly.
Okay, so we need to do that now?
Do it now.
And give it to who? So, now we gotta do that now too. That's what I'm trying to say. So, it's not the agreement no more that we just needed to do. Now, we need to go and do this in order to get the ball rolling.
No, no, we gotta do it together.
You gotta do...
That's what I'm trying to say, but before, before that wasn't asked. It wasn't asked, that wasn't asked from us before, but now tonight it is, okay? You give one or something, trying to say? It's the same with all of you. When you ask for something, and then also they add something else, two months down the road, you're like, well, we didn't, we weren't asked that two months ago. So, okay, so that's what I'm saying. So, now we gotta get that before anything gets rolling with this agreement.
No, we didn't, we didn't say that. We do it at the same time.
You do it all together.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, I mean...
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be the agreement, and then we gonna put this, it's gonna be all done and finished.
What he's saying is, why didn't y'all say that before? Before we could get started?
Well, I kinda thought that's what was said, but...
Not for us, for all the heads, y'all were talking about to get what Karn City wanted, and for us, the city of Kennedy, to get together and see what they agree on. That's the way...
But y'all hadn't done that yet. Y'all hadn't got anything set down to as far as...
Let's do this, guys.
What your agreement says for what, Kenny is gonna do. When can Kenny be there, when they can do, what they can do, and what Karn City can do there?
I agree now, here.
Jennifer Dillon.
That's who needs to be talking.
Yes.
And we need to go with the plan that we just said. We're gonna be back here on March third. Hopefully, we're as far as we need to be. Because all we're doing here is now is everybody's gonna be mad.
And I'll ask for certain questions of the interlocal.
All right. Before we, before we move, make, take any action on this. What all, make it clear right now, so until March third, there's not nothing left out there that they still need to do. What all do you need from it?
That's what I was gonna ask for.
The last, the last bit, because March third, we get back over here. We want this approved, so we can pass it, so there's no more holdbacks.
Now, with regard to the, they have contributions. What does that mean? How much from each agency? When, when will the facility be available to every agency? There's some, there's some, there's some generalities in here that have to be a little more specific. So, if the county attorney has that information, then, yeah, we could...
So, contributions, availability?
Could you not make a list of those? I mean, 'cause you're the ones gonna be going over and approving it, so could you not make that list of what you're looking for?
It takes two, it takes...
No, I know.
That's what he's asking for, is what we're asking of us.
That's between attorney to attorney. I'll say, okay? Now, you require a discretionary contribution. What does that mean? We can't give away city money. We have to have a purpose, it has to be budgeted. And if it's, if you ask that from everybody, then there's a certain percentage and a certain amount. Okay, fine. We know. So, what does that mean?
So, that's something you'll discuss. We don't have nothing to do with that. That's something you're gonna discuss.
Yeah, as long as she has the information she needs.
You'll have all your answers by March third, as long as y'all two get together, basically.
Basically, yes.
But she gonna be coming back to you guys, asking y'all some questions too.
Yes.
So, there's some decisions that you guys are gonna have to make about how you want to run your facility.
That's exactly why we were asking him what all he was gonna, but he keeps saying that's between him and her, but that's why we know, then we'll know what...
Well, actually, it's not, let me, let me help. It's not between him and her. This is an agreement between the city of Kennedy and the city of Karn City and the city of Rungy. That agreement, the rules and regulations that you guys want to establish, you, like you said, Karn City bought the land, they set it in motion. Now, they've invited Kennedy to be a part of it, and part of that invitation is some money that we're gonna put in the pot. But you have to set up your general operating procedures for your facility, and let the people that are gonna be involved know, these are the rules. This is what you, this is what's gonna be expected of you, and you're gonna give this on an annual basis, and you're gonna do, you're gonna get this for your contribution to our organization or our operation. It's, that's what he's asking. I'm like you guys, I don't, that needs to be taking place right now.
Okay, but we, well, I can't do it from the fire department, and he does it from the city hall. We have to be together, he said. So, when will that meeting take place, where we all come together and say, this is what's gonna happen?
And when I say it, you have to talk to your county attorney because she's gonna ask you.
No, I'm talking about us, Kennedy.
Yeah, you guys, you guys sit down and decide.
Basically, we need to sit down.
Y'all sit down with Charlie and talk about...
Having it worked out is scheduling, cleaning the facility after you're done, paying for propane if you wanna do propane burns, paying for smoke juice if you're gonna do smokes. And, yeah, that's the things we have to...
The general operating procedures for the facility. I hate, I hate legal words, 'cause they don't make sense to me. It's just talk in words that we all understand. So, you're gonna put together a standard operating procedure for your facility, and everybody will have a copy of that, and everybody will be held accountable to that. Now, you know, there's no question about, what? You just go to your SOP book and say, okay, this is the situation. Here's what we said we were gonna do, and it's done.
It's not gonna be real detailed. It's not gonna be...
No, it don't have, it doesn't have to be because it's your facility.
Just like the things that you had talked about. You said that everybody was gonna pitch in for the propane when it was low, or however y'all were gonna schedule it, those kinds of things. Put that in there. That's what we want to see.
See, I love right now, the county's budgeting fifteen dollars a year. We should take care of all of those kind of expenses. But I know Ms. Dillonhan put that ten thousand in there because that building has to be inspected every ten years, and it costs about ten thousand dollars. And should the county ever not fund that, then we'll have to worry about it. And I think she just wrote it up to that respect, just in case, but I don't see that coming to play. But we'd have to deal with that and make adjustments later. Our big meeting for department heads is setting up some kind of scheduling, first come, first served, or whatever it's gonna be. Somebody keep a calendar, you call, you wanna use a certain time. You wanna use this part of it, or that part of it, or the classroom, you know? If you use it, you're gonna clean the restrooms, you're gonna mop, you're gonna clean up afterwards. If you wanna do propane burns, whatever percentage of propane you, you're gonna pay for that. You wanna do, I mean, that's the minor things we have to work out.
That's the stuff, that's all, that's all we need. The interlocal agreement is just an agreement between cities to work together. That basically says we're gonna work together. But we need, and everybody needs that, and it's really, it's for all of you guys protection because we're not gonna always be here. I won't be sitting here in a year. He won't be, you know, somebody else gonna be here, and if they wanna change it, they gotta go back to what we agreed to and say, well, this is what was agreed to. Now, they still can try to change it, but if you don't have it wrote down, and you just wanna handshake, you know?
I don't think handshake don't mean what it is.
Yes. Y'all understand what we need, yes.
What do you guys wanna do?
Well, y'all ready, y'all ready to get after it now, Juan?
We have at least three more months to work out there before we can actually be full operational. There's some things we can do, but we got a long ways to go.
Well, we're getting back here, back here, March third.
So, March third, if you guys have that stuff, we should be able to give the approval for you to get the check to start moving forward.
Thank you, Pat. I make a motion, we, everybody ready?
I'm ready.
I make a motion, we table item number nine for March third to pass the amendment to this interlocal agreement so we can release funds for the Karn County Training Facility.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, please roll.
Has it been read?
Yes.
Has it been?
Yeah.
Has it been signed? Yes. Has it been funded? Yes.
Passes, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Hey, Juan, could you stay here for a minute? And maybe your three highest ranking guys?